Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on June 23, 2020 at 4:02 PM. Due to health and safety concerns related to the COVID-19 coronavirus, this meeting will be conducted by video conference or telephone call. At least a quorum of the board will be participating by video conference or telephone conference in accordance with the provisions of Sections 551.125 or 551.127 of the Texas Government Code that have been suspended by order of the governor. Members of the public may access this meeting via AISD website at www.aisd.net. The Board of Trustees on June 23, 2020, beginning at 4:03 PM will convene in closed session pursuant to Sections 551.071, 3551.084 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act for the topics set forth in our agenda. We will reconvene in open meeting at approximately 5:15 PM. At this time, I will reconvene into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees, June 23, 2020, at 5:37 PM. We will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Mr. Hogg, please join Mr. Hogg in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty for all. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid any disruptions. And now if you would please join me in a moment of silence. Next, we will consider administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And at this time, I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Bowles Junior High, Assistant Principal for Butler Elementary, and Assistant Principal for Hill Elementary.
Do we have a motion to approve the ratification of the administrative appointments as discussed in executive session?
President Mays, I move that we approve the appointments of the individuals discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Ms. Chapa.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. So we've got a motion by Mr. Chapa, a second by Ms. Walton. Any discussion? Since this meeting is being conducted virtually, our vote will be a roll call vote. Please state your name and your vote, either yes, if you are in favor of the motion, or no, if you are not in favor of the motion. And these rules will apply to the remaining votes for this meeting. Ms. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg.
Louie Hogg, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton.
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Okay. Keisha Mays, I vote yes. I'll vote in the affirmative, the motion passes. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And I'd like to introduce the Assistant Principal for Bowles Junior High, Mr. Robert Landon Smith. He attended Abilene Christian University for Bachelor of Arts in Youth and Family Ministry, University of Texas at Arlington for Master in Education for Ed Leadership and Policy Studies. Most recently, he was an Assistant Principal in Cleburne ISD, has taught Algebra I in Mansfield and math, and also taught math in White Settlement, and has been a youth minister as well. Congratulations to him. The Assistant Principal for Butler Elementary is Courtney Roseberry. And Courtney attended Weatherford College for her Associates of Arts, University of North Texas for Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies, and UT Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership and Policy Studies. Most recently, teacher support interventionist at Hill Elementary, has taught fourth grade ESL at Duff, and has been a fourth grade ESL teacher at Amos Elementary as well. Next, the new Assistant Principal for Hill Elementary is George Baylor. He attended Paul Quinn College for Bachelor of Arts in History, A&amp;M University Commerce for Master of Ed in Ed Administration. Most recently, George was an instructional specialist in Mansfield ISD, has taught fourth grade writing in Fort Worth, has also taught third grade reading and first grade as well. He's also been a behavior interventionist. So congratulations to these new appointees. And at a future board meeting, I will bring them for an introduction that they have already begun working. So that concludes the appointees. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos, and welcome to our additions. Okay, next in our agenda, we will open our public hearing on the 2021 budget and proposed tax rate. Ms. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding the 2020/21 budget and proposed tax rate?
No, ma'am, we have no registered requesters to speak.
Okay, so we have no comments. The public hearing on 2021 budget and proposed tax rate is now closed. Okay, now we come to the part of our agenda for open forum for agenda items. As stated on the posted agenda, members of the public who desire to address the board regarding an item on this agenda are required to register by sending an email to the Superintendent of Schools Secretary, Lisa Benjamin, lbenjamin@aisd.net, no later than 3:00 PM the day of the board meeting. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, then we will continue on through our agenda. Next on the agenda are action items. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And the next action item is to consider the acquisition of real property as described in the agenda.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I will move to approve the motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Walton, a second by Mrs. Fowler. So any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, let's vote. Mrs. Fowler.
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg.
Louie Hogg, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich.
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Walton.
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks.
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Mr. Chapa.
Justin Chapa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Motion passes. I'll vote in the affirmative for the action item to consider approving a resolution and Texas Association of Realtors Commercial Contract. Okay, next on our agenda is discussion action item. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And this evening, we bring another update to our budget process, and it is a brief update because we have had these conversations ongoing. And so I'll turn it over to Ms. Powell.
Thank you, President Mays, board members, Dr. Cavassos. Good evening. As Dr. Cavassos mentioned, we've had several discussions on the preliminary 2020-21 fiscal year budget to date. We've had three already. We had posted notice for the required hearing on the proposed budget and tax rate to be this evening. We did not have any speakers for that hearing, but I do want to refresh everyone's memory on where we are in the process. We will have an opportunity to allow you all to ask questions this evening for any item you may be interested in in the preliminary budget. We will come back on Thursday and present information to the board on compensation increases. Our Board Finance and Academics Committee continues to work with administration, and we are also working with TASPI on models for compensation increases. We'll present that information to the board on Thursday evening, let the board discuss that, and then ultimately determine perhaps what final adjustments the board wishes to make to the budget, including anything on compensation. And then the board at that point can consider adopting the budget. Although, we have to adopt the budget by June 30th because our fiscal year begins July 1st. We do not adopt a tax rate until August after we receive our certified property values. So you see the timeline here, we have to adopt the budget by June 30th. We plan to bring the budget to you all again on Thursday, the 25th, and that's where we anticipate finalizing the budget in July. We will receive our certified values July 24, approximately. And then we have to adopt a rate in August, by August 17th, if the board intends to adopt a rate that it sees as a rollback rate to trigger a rollback election. So looking at some of the different funds that we've been talking about over the last several weeks, this is a very high-level summary of the budget we presented for the general fund. You all have received a packet that has the detail of this budget and the budgets for the other funds as well, but this is the summary of revenues and expenditures that we have included in the preliminary budget for the general fund. We have a deficit of $16.2 million in the general fund preliminary budget, that is before any consideration for compensation changes. This assumes that incorporates into our funding, our revenue calculations, the zero growth in property values, and the compression that we expect the state to make on our M&amp;O tax rate for the upcoming year under the provisions of House Bill 3. For the other funds, we have four other funds that the board also considers a budget for at this time of each year. Food Service Fund, we are reflecting currently a surplus of $721,755 for next year, just like the general fund. This budget does not yet include any provision for a raise. The food service employees always receive raises commensurate with those that we give for the general fund. The Natural Gas Fund is reflecting a surplus of $807,621 in next year's preliminary budget. The Debt Service Fund has a deficit or a planned use of fund balance of $235,955. As I mentioned at our last meeting, when we bring the proposed budget to you, we will actually change this to use more of our fund balance to apply towards payment of principal and interest in this upcoming year. So you will see the revenue number go down, and that will generate a larger, what appears to be deficit. It's really not a deficit, it is a planned use of surplus fund balance to help us fund our principal and interest payment in this upcoming year and help us lower the debt service tax rate for next year. Then the Construction Fund is where we account for proceeds of bond sales. We sold bonds in February, the first issue of bonds approved through the 2019 bond program. So those funds, at the end of the current fiscal year, will close to fund balance, they're part of this beginning fund balance number here. And then you can see our planned expenditures in the upcoming 12 months for those funds for the Phase 1 projects in the bond program. Work has already begun on several of those projects, and we've actually ordered buses already as planned for Phase 1. We're beginning to order technology equipment that was planned for Year 1, and also fine arts instruments and uniforms planned for Year 1. So this is, again, this is using bond proceeds from our bond sale in February that have closed to fund balance. So with that, we will be happy to answer any additional questions that the board has about the budget, and we will look forward to our discussion on Thursday to hopefully finalize the budget for next year.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mrs. Powell. Are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Hogg.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, President Mays. And Ms. Powell, let me ask just a couple of questions. You know, right now at our current tax rate, and if we move, if we happen to do a TRE, do you see any trend on us trending towards recapture or potential of getting to that stage in the future? I know we were on a trend, and HB3 added some compression and reduced that. What's our thought on that, on the recapture?
Right, so with House Bill 3, the legislature increased the basic allotment, and so recapture, there are two different levels of recapture. So on the Level 1 recapture, that is tied directly to the basic allotment. So when they increased the basic allotment, then that meant that our property values per student are now at a much further distance away from that trigger for recapture. The Level 2 recapture is on those what are called copper pennies. We have, again, they've changed the guarantee there, the yield level moved it up, and so we are not knocking on that door like we are down the road. If our property values continue to increase, we will inch towards that, but we are not there now. Don't see getting in there in the next few years. Another thing that will impact that is a change in enrollment because that yield is based on a per-student property wealth. And so if our enrollment dips over the next few years, we will get closer to that recapture threshold.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Let me ask, and following up on that, my next question was about enrollment. What risk and concerns? You know, listen, we had a huge amount of our students, there were still students in the spring, we didn't hear from, we didn't talk with some of those things. You know, there's some that who knows where they've moved to and left, some left the country, some of those things, and you know, what's the risk and concern that, what's the risk that we need to be considering for dips in enrollment for this unprecedented year of parents being concerned about bringing their kids back to school, whether they come back or not? What's our, what's our risk we potentially face with this?
So that's a good question, and we have had discussion around that. And so all of our plans right now, as we've discussed before, assume normal operations, normal enrollment pattern, understanding that it won't be normal this upcoming year. Just to give you context, if we were to lose 2.5% of our enrollment, that would be 1,500 students, and we would, we would generate about $12.5 million less than, than we would assuming 100% of our projected enrollment is here. A lot of our cost is in people, and so, you know, we've got commitments to staff based on our anticipated enrollment for the upcoming year. The transfer window that we've opened recently has been very positive, and we've seen several hundred from outside the district seeking opportunity to come to our district. That's encouraging. We, with our pre-K registration, that's going very, very well. That was another place that we thought could be an indicator is to what a drop in enrollment we might experience, and we're not seeing that yet. So I think we still feel pretty good that we'll recognize the vast majority of our students. That is a risk, though, that if we don't have the enrollment that we projected, we will have staffed for our full enrollment, and we will generate less state aid.
And I appreciate that. I think it's a risk we're all aware of. I know it's in the board community, our board to other boards out there. I've talked with numerous trustees around the state that have concern over that, but I think that's one of the reasons we are, work so hard to keep our fund balance in place, because the worst thing that could happen is enrollment number dips, and you say, you know, 1.5%, 1,500 students, it could be 3,000 students, it could be twice that, that would be unprecedented, but there's been a lot of things that have been unprecedented that have happened this last six months that we weren't aware of. And so I think to my colleagues, good job on, and for working and making sure we maintain a healthy fund balance for that reason, because I do think it could be a one-year dip potentially for us in this instance, and then it comes back the next year, and we don't want to lose valuable teachers during that time. I do think we have to be cautious over that, so I would encourage staff, as you look at some hirings, you know, hiring season's big in May and June, but then July and August are also big hiring seasons, to fill extra spots. I think the tighter we can staff some of our ratios for this year, I think the more it helps us mitigate some of that risk, because our risk is in the number of people. Now, the problem is, we know wherever we staff or we lose students is where we're not going to have teachers, so you have to shuffle around. So it's a, it's a tough game to play and work on that, but I think the more we staff tighter in our ratios on this to meet our numbers, I think the better it is for this odd year. I think the best way to describe it is odd and different year that we're tackling. Ms. Powell, let me ask two more questions. What's the risk HB3 and the HB3 funding? I don't think, not this year, but in future years after 2021 legislative session.
Well, and that's a good guess, too. We, the legislature will meet next spring and set their two-year budget for the years beginning in the '21, '22 fiscal year and the '22, '23 fiscal year. The legislature made very significant commitments to the public for funding public education and increased funding for public education. I think they will be, there will be a lot of political pressure for them to continue those commitments. They obviously have very clearly acknowledged that the state is in a recession. They have been hurt through sales tax revenue and low oil prices for several months, along with just the problems caused by the closures. And so it's still anybody's guess on that. They have, they've chosen to use federal cares money to backfill their obligations to the state funding formulas this year to save the state money so that they can fully fund the funding formulas next year. And next year, the 2021 fiscal year is still part of the current biennium that we're working in. And so when they meet again in the spring, they'll be working on a budget for, in that following biennium, and it's, you know, we just don't know at this point what that may look like.
Yeah, it's a glass ball. This is the time of year we always ask you to do, give us predictions, and it's always hard to do, and luckily, I, you know, I think the price of oil is back up at $41 today.
It is, right.
Every little bit that price, listen, oil drives a lot of the state and our overall economic budget, so I appreciate that. To my colleagues and maybe even Ms. Powell, every year I talk about TRS active care. Health insurance, you know, we can't just talk salaries, we can't talk overall without talking about everything, and I have to thank Mr. Kale and Ms. Powell and Dr. Cavassos and our entire board and staff for doing a lot of work with TRS active care. We'll see if it's better. We've switched, teachers are switching to Blue Cross Blue Shield. They've definitely made some, getting very aggressive on some of their cost-saving measures. And this year, I think there's a high deductible plan, and there's actually a little decrease in premiums, which is what the majority of our teachers are enrolled in, and that HD1, I can't remember which plan it is. So I don't think it's an issue we need to address this year. I don't think we can stop advocating and pushing TRS active care, because I still don't think it's comparable insurance across the board. And honestly, Ms. Walton always brought this up to me years ago, it's not livable wage insurance, but there's nothing that counters it of what we have to do and where we need to go. So I think we're sticking with what we got, I think we're still working TRS active care, and I think it could easily be on our legislative agenda for the 2021 session and fighting that battle. You know, you may never get rid of me till I win that battle, and that may be the fight of what we have, because it is, it is a key issue and such a valuable item to so many of our teachers' salaries. And Ms. Powell, that's into my questions, but let me thank you for over all these years as you come up on retirement and your last budget with us. I can't thank you enough for all the questions and all the work you've done on these budgets over all these years. Ms. Moss, you have big shoes to fill, but Ms. Powell, thank you for always being consistent and playing the game with us of how fast you and your team can answer the questions, no matter what we ask on a budget.
Thank you.
And from year one to now, many years later, I'm still impressed with how y'all do it, and more importantly, I'm impressed that our trust in your faith in the budget of accuracy of numbers and detail is immeasurable, and can't thank you enough, but thank you for that, and I think that's into my questions for tonight, but I just wanted to say that thank you, Ms. Powell.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hogg, and thank you for those comments as well. Any other questions or comments from trustees? Yes, Dr. Reich.
Thank you, President Mays. Ms. Powell, thank you for the information. We have been looking at it quite a bit. I appreciate everything that you've done to indulge all of our questions, and to Mr. Hogg's point, the quick turnaround of the responses to those questions and the, in some situations, the atypical questions versus what we would normally do this time of year because of this unprecedented year. It is a very difficult budget scenario, many scenarios to work out. So I just really appreciate everything that you've done there. I am really looking forward to our next meeting to really do the deep dive on compensation and the best-case scenario for what we can do to make it right for our teachers, our staff there. We, it's a very tough budget year overall, but we also are committed as a board to do the right thing for our staff as a result of HB3. I'll get into more of that at our next meeting, but I really look forward to what you'll have to present there. Echo Mr. Hogg's comments, we're, I'm not going to say much now, maybe, maybe in a couple days, we've got to get through this budget first, it's not done yet.
Yes, we do.
I do have one just small question, don't know that you have the answer, but related to the attendance numbers with the discussion with Mr. Hogg, are, with those that we were not able to contact, and this might be somebody else to answer, Dr. Cavassos, I don't know, do we, out of the ones that we weren't able to reach, did they coalesce into any category as far as elementary, junior high, or high school? Was there anything there? I'm just thinking, the enormity of the idea of trying to adjust staffing and tightening it up, as Mr. Hogg was talking about, I didn't know if there's any pieces of like that there that might lend a helping hand.
I'm going to ask Dr. Cavassos maybe if he has that background.
Yeah, so we were able to reach the vast majority of students. The seniors maybe were a big priority, understanding, as Mr. Hogg has mentioned, that last, that when we closed in the spring, we basically, they were plugging our attendance as an average. So just to provide a context, their accounting for attendance was basically to keep us sustained. So reaching and having attendance and all that was not required, we did it, and it was important. Fast forward to upcoming in August, and we're going to cover this here in the update here in a minute, we'll be required to take attendance every day. We'll be required to take attendance every day, whether you're at home or you're at school. And and so that's going to really be a challenge, because we're going to have to make contact on a daily basis with students. And that in and of itself is a challenge. Who's going to make that contact when the teachers are teaching other students and things like that? Those are, those are really important questions, but we'll get into that here in the update, Dr. Reich. But we're able to reach the vast majority. We had to at the end code for P E M's whether they were engaged or not. If you recall, the very first week or two of closure, we had teachers calling students their second period and things like that, and we made good contact. Keeping in mind that contact does not equate to turning in the assignments to to all that. That's, those are, those are very different things. So when you start looking at, yes, we were able to contact, but were they engaged? Those numbers began to fluctuate.
Sure, sure. That'll obviously impact attendance as well. Okay, well, well, very good. Look forward to additional discussions. It is, as I've I've said too many times, I guess, it is, it is such a tough budget. I do appreciate that we do have such a strong finance team in this district. As Mr. Hogg said, we we do have the the trust of the accuracy of those numbers and the forecast, the assumptions, and it it is not with, in just a lackadaisical approach, that any of us are looking at the amount of budget deficit we're going to be facing this year, you know, with with any kind of lightheartedness. It's, but at the same point, with the trust in you and and the numbers and and the situation, we we stand at the ready, we've got to do what we've got to do. So it's, it's certainly going to be one of the the hardest ones that I've seen in my tenure. So again, thank you, and to please share with all the team that you guys have put in such a tremendous amount of work, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dr. Reich. Any other trustees with questions or comments? No? Okay, so next on our agenda. That's my paperwork got buried under the laptop. Okay, so next on our agenda are items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items to be drawn? Okay, I see no hands. So tonight, we will be considering the items listed on your agenda under consent. Ms. Powell?
Great, thank you, President Mays, board members, Dr. Kavassos. We have donations to report this evening, donations totaling twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which brings our year-to-date total to six hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. We also have nine bids on the agenda, and we have twenty-two items on the over fifty thousand list of items exempt from bids. Those are generally items where we have bids in place, and we're seeking procurement authority for the extension periods of those bids.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm going to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Ms. Fowler, a second by Mr. Hogg. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, we will vote. Mrs. Fowler?
Melody Fowler, I vote yes.
Mr. Hogg?
Booy Hogg, I vote yes.
Dr. Reich?
Aaron Reich, I vote yes.
Ms. Walton?
Holly Walton, I vote yes.
Mr. Will Banks?
David Will Banks, I vote yes.
Chappa?
Justin Chappa, I vote yes.
Keisha Mays, I vote yes. Consent agenda passes unanimously. So next on our agenda is our discussion item. Dr. Kavassos?
Thank you, President Mason. This week, in this board meeting like we have in the board meeting since we closed, we have an agenda item to provide an update to the board related to closure and and this time period. So as was much anticipated today, the T E A was going to release how we come back to school in the fall. They did not release that, just to be clear. They did not release the requirements or how face-to-face instruction would happen in August. They predicted that they would, and then they did not. What they released instead was how funding specifically related to at-home or online, call it, call it either one, and how funding will work for school districts. This question about attendance and and things like that was was really kind of leading up to this this presentation. And so how it will work for at-home learning, and and those things are important and what we'll have to do. Again, the questions about how we open school, what are the requirements, are there class size requirements, are there requirements for temperature checks, and all those items that were predicted to be released today, they were not released today. And I think, this is my perspective, it it probably coincides with the fact that the numbers are rising in terms of the cases across the state, and it makes any of that kind of decision more challenging. So what we do know, though, is how funding will work when students are at home and doing at-home learning in our case. So Ms. Powell and Dr. Wertz are going to work through a presentation that was discussed today. Again, the call was at three o'clock today, so it's it's a presentation that the commissioner went through, it's a T E A presentation, so that we can walk through it and you can get the update as as we received it. So Ms. Powell, the doctor works.
All right. Good evening, President Mays, members of the board, Dr. Kavassos. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. As Dr. Kavassos mentioned earlier, we received an update from the commissioner regarding how to prepare for remote instruction and specifically how we would calculate our funding based on students' attendance. And what I thought, what we will share with you at the beginning is, you're looking at a graph, and about six days ago, a study was published that looked at the COVID-19 and the stabilization policies that have been implemented across the United States and the effect those policies have had on spending and employment. And as a result of that study, an an economic tracker was created in in collaboration with Harvard and Brown Universities and the Bill and Lyndon Gates Foundation. And as part of that tracker, they looked at education and the impact education processes, how they were impacted during the COVID-19 closure. And the graph that you see in front of you looks at what they're calling the COVID slide, which is the regression or the lack of progress that students are making because of the closure across the country. And this specific slide references about fifty percent of the states across the United States and districts within those states around a program called ZERN, which is an online math program. And ZERN basically, just so you have a sense of what you're looking at, is an education nonprofit group that partners with school systems around math, and they have a program where they combine in-person instruction with digital lessons. And what they looked at was how students were progressing, and the way they measured progress on this graph is specifically the number of lessons that students completed each week. And they capped it, the one that you're looking at is how it looked ending on March, May twenty-fourth. So if you look at this data on the United States data, it's looking at income brackets, so high-income brackets, middle-income brackets, and low-income brackets, and they're showing you the growth or the regression or the decrease in progress or the decrease in the number of lessons completed as time went on. Now, there's a couple of things you're going to want to pay attention to when looking at this graph. One is, of course, you expect it to go a little bit down as the as the year progresses, because school's getting out. But in the United States, across it, it pretty much is divided amongst income lines. So kids who were economically disadvantaged or from more impoverished homes tend to do, tend to not demonstrate as much progress in completing the lessons as those that were from more affluent. What the graph doesn't tell you is why that's the case, whether it's lack of connectivity or struggling with their learning. The data in in Texas, which is not highlighted on their slide, is actually the opposite. The the high-income students actually progressed almost double the rates of, the almost, the low-income students actually progressed at a rate almost double to the high-income students in Texas, and that may simply be that in Texas, maybe students of low-income brackets are participating in this in this platform more often than than those that are from higher-income brackets. I'm not, I'm not really quite sure why. But I think the point that they're making is a valid one, which is students who are coming from more impoverished backgrounds tend to have a bigger gap when they show up at school, which is something we have to address. So what we wanted to, when we think about, when we got today the information about how to do attendance, we were really looking at a couple of things. And the main thing is, how do we prevent, we'll go to the next slide, how do we prevent this crisis that's happening in the public health system to, how do we prevent that from becoming a crisis in education for an entire generation of students? And so what we are going to talk about today is how we intend to address that gap in that slide and also instruction when kids go back to school in a remote environment. And there are a couple of ways that we have a chance to think about this. So when it comes to, when we started the COVID-19 closure, as Dr. Kavassos indicated, we had some waivers that were applied to school districts regarding attendance. We did not have to take daily attendance to to acquire the funding that's normally due to the district. However, when we think about going back to school, it was important for the state to provide some kind of framework that allowed us to receive funding based on the actual provision of instruction in the schools. And so what you're going to find in the discussion that we're going to share tonight is their attempt to provide some structure framework that balances two concepts. One is a a system that's flexible enough to generate predictable funding for a school district and at the same time be accountable to taxpayers by providing instruction to the students in the city. Now, there are, there is, this, this system has generated two types of learning, which I'm going to talk about in just a second. What's, what Cindy will do is she'll share a little bit about how that's, this idea is actually connected to our ADA system.
Right, so everyone's aware that in the state of Texas, we are not funded based on enrollment. We're funded on attendance. And so there are these age-old systems in place to take attendance every day and to account for the time that students spend in certain instructional settings that are more costly to operate, such as special education, career tech, bilingual ESL. And so what the state has done is, they have been working this summer to adapt that attendance accounting system to a virtual learning environment. What we did in this this past year, you heard Dr. Kavassos mention this, the state said, basically, they counted our average daily attendance through the fourth, six weeks period. Then they used data from the prior year regarding the change from that point to year end to extrapolate out for the remainder of the 2019, 2020 year, and that's how they are calculating our attendance for the 2019, 2020 year and paying us for that in an attempt to hold us harmless for the closures that we all experience. Going forward, though, they've indicated that attendance will be required in every setting, and so they've worked to modify how that might look in an online environment. And they use the Texas Virtual School Network as a guide for that. And in starting with that, they've said that that students below grade three cannot generate attendance in a synchronous environment, and I'll see that here in just a minute. But there, there's a provision in place for the TXPSN network to submit its courses for approval to T E A, so they likewise are applying that kind of approval process to public schools across the district or across the state, rather, for the upcoming year for your virtual environment. They will require districts wanting to offer an asynchronous plan to submit a plan to the state outlining how you will deliver that. And they are going to provide a bit of a grace period for all of us on attendance. They fully recognize that when school gets started, parents may not be comfortable sending their students back. It may take a little while to, for them to gain some confidence and comfort in that. And so they created, as we'll see in just a few minutes, a a whole harmless provision to help districts weather that for the first few weeks of the school year. They've been very clear today that these changes that they make will be through a waiver process and that they will only be effective for this upcoming year. The legislature will meet in the spring, and they may give consideration to to a system going forward even beyond this year. What you're about to hear will only be effective for this upcoming school year.
So there are two specific types or methods to fund remote instruction, and both of them are ones that can be considered as we plan. The first one is called synchronous instruction, and basically that just requires that all the participants be present at the same time virtually. And this would be an example of a teacher working through Zoom, talking to all of her kids at the same time and trying to conduct instruction through video calls or a schedule, very similar to the way that he or she would do that in a face-to-face environment. Asynchronous instruction is the other method, and this does not require all the students to be present at the same time. Some examples of this would be self-paced learning, or students may actually engage in some self-paced learning and online assignments they do on their own, and then also some scheduled intermittent times where they work with their teacher, or or they could do that through even pre-recorded instruction with some guided support. Asynchronous instruction is very much what we participated in during our closure in Arlington. We did, we did not really do synchronous instruction. The important thing about either one of these two methods is the law requires that whichever method a district chooses to employ, you must cover all of the curriculum in both of, in either one of those two methods. So you cannot just leverage what we would call power standards or things that you think are the most important to teach. We're required to teach all the standards, including the standards that are that are in some of the electives or fine arts or athletics that we normally have as a requirement. So I'd like, I'm going to jump into each of those methods a little bit. The first one is around synchronous instruction, and as I mentioned, it's very similar to being on campus. It's two-way, real-time, live instruction of the kids. And in order to take attendance in a synchronous environment, T E A will require the district to establish an official attendance time, and students who are logged in at the time the teacher is supposed to take attendance at that designated time would be reported as present under the code present remote synchronous in P E M's. And if a student is not logged in at the time when the official attendance is supposed to be taken, then that student will be reported as absent. And teachers will have to follow as a very specific schedule, and that's very similar to, well, that's exactly what we do right now with T E A in a face-to-face environment. There's a designated time when we take attendance, and if you're present when we take it, you're present, and if you're not, you're absent. Now, when it comes to synchronous environments, ADA really looks at full versus half-day funding. So to receive full-day funding for grades three through five, synchronous instruction has to, the duration has to last at least one hundred and eighty instructional minutes. For six through twelve is two hundred and forty. And as Ms. Powell mentioned earlier, if it's a pre-K through two student, those students are not eligible to be receiving funding in a synchronous model. They, they have to participate in an online environment through asynchronous learning, which I'll talk about in a minute, in order for the district to acquire ADA funding. It's important to note that the minutes do not need to be consecutive in nature, and if students have other things that they participate as part of their learning, like externships, internships, apprenticeships, those, those times can also be counted as part of their of their full day. If if a student was registered in in a course or or a schedule that would only offer a half-day amount of funding, we simply have to divide the number of full-day minutes required into, and that would be the minute requirement for that student. And then lastly, when it comes to grading, as you know, we we went to a pass-fail scenario in the spring. In the fall, grading with policies will will revert back to the practices that we used prior to COVID closure, and students that participate in remote learning during the fall moving forward, their grading process will be consistent to those that are in the face-to-face environment, which will be similar to prior to closure. For for synchronous ADA, there is a waiver that we will have to complete with T E A, and in that waiver, as a district, will have to submit an attestation that lets the the state state know that we're prepared to offer synchronous instruction, and that has to be completed prior to them funding the district. There will be a checklist that we'll have to complete, and that checklist will be published on the, on the second of July. And some of the items that will be found on that checklist will include, are confirming that our teachers have been trained, that they've practiced using synchronous instruction, and that there's tech support available to troubleshoot if there are issues when, when instruction is being delivered. The other method is asynchronous instruction, and that's what we've been doing during closure. This, this type of instruction is pretty much defined as an experience where students engage in learning, but they do so in their own time. They may interact intermittently with the teacher through an electronic device, like a computer or the phone. And all grades pre-K through 12 are eligible to receive funding who participate in asynchronous environment. The requirements are the same as synchronous in that you have to teach all the required standards that the state has, and also the grading policies are the same regardless of whether it's synchronous or asynchronous for students. When it comes to generating full-day funding, the way that this is defined in asynchronous environment is your engagement. And that's different from synchronous, because if you remember, in synchronous, students had to log in at a very specific time, and if they are present, they got recorded, they were recorded, they would be recorded as present. If they were not, they would be reported as absent. In an asynchronous environment, because it's not, not requiring everyone to log on at a specific time, staff will be required to check each day for student engagement. So student engagement can be monitored or measured in three different ways. It can be monitored as progress, meaning the students are making progress in the LMS, meaning on Canvas or in CSOW, doing their work. We can see that. We can also see that there was a teacher-student interaction. So if the teacher had some interaction with students that day, she could, he or she could count them as engaged, or if a student turned in an assignment. One of the questions that's come up is, well, if we provide in an asynchronous environment all the work for the week and the student turns in all the work on Friday, can they get credit for the entire week as being engaged? And the answer is no. We will have to track daily engagement of the students through one of those three ways that are noted on the slide. And then students who are noted as not engaged will be marked absent. Just like with synchronous, asynchronous ADA method also will include a waiver, and that waiver will have four key requirements that we'll have to address. We will have to provide an instructional schedule, which outlines our expectations and the settings of how kids are learning, and pretty much how that looks equivalent to being on campus in terms of an instructional day. We'll also have to demonstrate that we provided a curriculum that's designed to be implemented in an asynchronous environment, and that student progress can be measured and it's also defined, and that we, as a district, have provided our, our teachers with support so that they can provide that remote instruction to students. This waiver will require that we post this plan online on the website for parents to be able to see, and we can differentiate between grade levels and subjects, but we only have to actually submit one as a district. And to, to kick back to what Ms. Powell had said earlier in the presentation, all plans that are submitted to TEA initially, for the first three weeks of instruction, will be receiving what they're calling contingent approval, so that the districts can make adjustments once school starts and kids are actually enrolled. The other thing that I think is important to note about this, and if you'll remember a couple of meetings ago, when I shared our work on how we were designing instruction, we have several task force that are currently underway that are looking at each of these things to design them and ready our, our system for our kids' return, which will include our teaching learning process, technology, transportation, safety and security, social emotional learning, and all the other areas that, that we had talked about. So this is just a timeline to give you a sense about how, as a district, we would go about submitting an asynchronous plan with that idea that there is a grace period in the first three weeks of school. There's an application window that will open on July 15th. They're going to post a template online on the second of, of July. And then we have to submit our waiver by October 1st. And then you can see the progression of the timeline so that we can receive either approval with revisions that we need to make within a 30 to 45 day of submission, or just have it be approved. And then at, at the end of our, our grace period, funding for asynchronous remote learning would stop without the approved plan. So we have to make sure it was approved by then.
So the school or the state has built into this a hold harmless provision and also an attendance cap. Red box on here outlines their, their, their attempt at a hold harmless provision. They are, A, they're going to give us a grace period for the first two, six weeks reporting period. And in that period, in that first two, six-week period, if a district's average daily attendance is more than 1% less than it was in the previous year, then you can basically exclude the first two, six weeks from the total overall calculation of average daily attendance for the 20-21 year for funding purposes. And it does say some restrictions apply. Haven't seen those yet. My thinking is that in some cases, a proppant enrollment is going to be one of those restrictions that will take into place. If you are offering one of those asynchronous plan, then you get an additional week there, additional six-week period through the third, six weeks for that attendance grace period. On the other side of this, they, and it's not shown here, but it's in their FAQ, there will be a cap on your attendance that you can report. And they're going to use your attendance rate from the 2018, 2019 school year. That will be a cap on your attendance that you can report in the 2021 year. So if in the 18, 19 year, your attendance rate was 94%, and this year, upcoming in the 2021 year, the maximum enrollment rate that you can have would be that same 94%. You could not report 100% attendance this upcoming year as an example. The remote instruction, as I said here, they, they have never used anything like this before to award attendance and less funding, aside from what was done on emergency basis this spring. And so they've created a framework for that here, and it does come with some requirements, and they outline those here. As you've heard us mention, attendance will be required every day. Student work will be turned in, has to be graded, consistent with our normal grading practices before the closure. Here's the, a big one, academic accountability will return this upcoming year, I'd say. And then for asynchronous plans, daily student progress with academic content has to be documented, and then districts have to have an approved plan for that. So this is today, all about the online environment. And as Dr. Cavassos mentioned, we had expected to hear about in-person learning today and did not. That should be coming either Thursday or next week, we hope. And so there's still a lot of details to be fleshed out here, but at least now we have some indication of what will be required in order to earn average daily attendance and less funding in an online environment. I will say too, that one of the comments that was made this afternoon, they had both Senator Taylor and Representative Huberty offer a few comments at the start of the call. And Larry Taylor made the comment that the state would be searching for additional funds to help all of us with technology, to make sure that students who are learning from home have the technology that they need for that. So that was another commitment that they made. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Works and Ms. Powell. Do I have any colleagues that have questions, comments? Yes, Ms. Walton?
Just on that last note, the comment from Larry Taylor, looking for more funding from technology, would that also apply to connectivity, or would it just be devices?
No, I think it is connectivity as well, in that this is something that several districts have, have really pressed on, and so they're looking. I don't know how close they are to offering up a, a concrete plan for helping us fund that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. May.
Yes, Mr. Chapa.
Dr. Rice can go.
No, that's okay. Go ahead, Justin.
Cindy and Dr. Cavassos have, has there even been, been any discussion as to why the state and TEA are sticking to their guns on accountability is going to be in place next year, even with these changes? I mean, I noticed from your presentation, Ms. Powell, you, it specifically says, you know, we've never done this before outside of VSN, whether we do asynchronous or synchronous. And they recognize that we're going to have to have adjustments because, to the attendance requirements, because we know for a fact, we're going to have significant attendance or engagement disruptions throughout this process. And yet, they're saying, we're going to have accountability in place like this as any other year. So those things don't fit for me. So I'm wondering if you can give some insight into why the state is not, at this point, considering adjustments to the accountability system.
So I'll, I'll start that, and I'm sure Dr. Cavassos will want to add. They spoke about the need for grace, and a lot of grace, and needing to continue to provide that opportunity for learning while still balancing that with accountability for taxpayers who are, are funding the, the, the education of our students. And so it was largely tied to accountability for taxpayer funds. Cavassos may want to add to that.
Yeah, so I'll just, I'll kind of reinforce the, the point, and it is not aligned. It is a misalignment. It, you know, the, the at-home instruction, asynchronous or synchronous, is less than ideal, but it's necessary in this environment and with COVID. So we know that. And so it's not aligned. We know students are going to have gaps. We know those gaps will be agitated, if you will, as we, as, as they stay home and do online learning. And then to expect that they're going to perform on a STAR test when we have social emotional needs we're going to have to meet, and all kinds of other needs for students. And, and so it's not aligned. There is not a good, from my perspective, and this is more my perspective, there is not a good explanation. Even the one about, you know, there has to be accountability. The whole there has to be is not aligned, because the way we're doing instruction, if, if we can't here at the end of June almost have an understanding from the state how we're going to come back to school, if we're going to come back to school. But there can be certainty around accountability is, is misalignment.
And it seems like that would be a pretty common sense thing. I know this board adopted a resolution, specifically a calling for the suspension of the accountability system for next year. And again, not calling for, we didn't even go so far as to call for a suspension of STAR, because I think some people realize that there is a value in having some sort of assessment to see how we compare to other districts in the state and seeing if any gaps did develop between us and other districts. But it, it just, to me, seems like such a common sense-defying thing to insist on that, given the significant challenges that we know that we're going to go through. And I understand the point about taxpayers have, you know, they want schools to be accountable. But I'm sure that, you know, those, their taxpayers are also our constituents. And what I'm hearing from our, you know, my constituents is that they think that it would be entirely detrimental to have this in place next year. They don't want, teachers don't want this hanging over their head. Parents don't want their students stressed out about it. And I think taxpayers are also under the impression that they're paying for an accountability system that's valid, and that it gives us a meaningful measurement of what we're doing. And I don't think that this current system does, and there's a lot of flaws in it in any normal year. But certainly, I think this next year, taxpayers are not going to expect us to go on with business as usual on the accountability front, when everyone full, well knows that this is not a normal year. And so I, I've seen a few state representatives across the state, a few of them with language very close to our resolution, have started getting on board and saying that, that accountability should be suspended next year. And so, you know, to anybody watching, I would encourage our, our constituents at this point, you know, send an email to our state representatives and senators and, and pick up the phones if you need to. This is a decision that I think should be very easy for the state to make, to get, I understand it's a complex situation, but this is one thing that should not be on the table at this point, and we need certainty on that going on. And in, in any way insisting that next year is going to be the same on that front is just unacceptable, in my view.
Well said, Mr. Chapa.
Ms. Fowler?
Yeah, you're on mute.
Yes, you're muted, Ms. Fowler.
Okay, I think, you know, for accountability, I mean, I think we could send out a survey to our people, and they would be in favor of no, of doing away with the test for another year. I mean, I think our, as Justin was saying, our, our constituents would definitely back us up on this. Our students are not going to be ready. Our teachers are not going to be ready. It's too much pressure in a regular school year, not even counting the kind of year we had at the end of the year last year, and this coming year would be uncertainties. Well, I think, I like what Mr. Chapa said about contacting your, your state reps and let them know how we feel, because it's, it's not fair to anyone to expect us to go in and, and take a STAR test.
Thank you, Mrs. Fowler. Any other comments or questions from colleagues? Yes, Dr. Rice?
Thank you, President Mays. Yeah, Mr. Chapa asked the main question and brought up the points that I had the most concern with, so I absolutely echo those. It, it seems their, their heels are dug in. There's not a discussion even of a modified system. As everything else has been so fluid and changing, I, I'm cautiously optimistic that this will change too, but that certainly isn't a, a, a comment to say stand down. We definitely need to continue to advocate as a district, as a board, as a community. So I support all of those statements. The, the end result out of all of this, what I've seen and what I've heard, there has been a little bit more momentum on other districts also calling for the change of accountability, as well as just let's get rid of STAR altogether this year coming up. But that's neither here nor there. I am curious, do we have any information from Dr. Barlow's meetings at the state level where they have identified their directions or priorities at this point?
Do you want me?
Go ahead, Dr.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Cavassos.
No, no, I was going to ask you to, if you have.
I was going to say, no, we don't have any more information than what we shared at the last, the last meeting. It's, it, the trajectory is still the same. We've been, he's been able to contribute and share the ideas, but in terms of any kind of definitive change, it's, it's virtually the same.
All right, well, we've got our, our work cut out for us. And regarding the technology access, I, I think it's important for all of us to put it out there that even for those that we may feel are anti-public education or interpreting our, the constitutionality of public education being the, you know, it's, it's a basic right just to provide that, and, and not necessarily all of the other things that we have to do, whether it's through mandate or through our student population need. The access, looking at whether it's synchronous or asynchronous, the access is part of that right to that education. And I think we really need to put that into our conversation, not just as this board, but going into the next legislative session, that this is a new, a new footprint, a new paradigm for education, and constitutionally, that it, it is a right in the state. And so if we're looking at an online model, hybrid, whatever, then that needs to be considered at the state level as well. Thank you very much. I look forward to hearing hopefully some more changes. It's, it's ever, every. it's ever, ever evolving with, with the numbers that are increasing and, and testing and the hospitalization rates. I'm not very optimistic on what our fall looks like for anybody. So thanks to you, everybody.
Thank you. And I, I'm going to follow up. The, the plan that Senator Taylor spoke about was entitled Operation Connectivity. And so I think that is more of the focuses around connectivity than, than hardware.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Rice. Thank you again, Ms. Powell. Thank you for bringing this information to us. As fluid as it is, as much as it may or may not make sense, I think for us as a governing body is we just need to make sure that something is in place so that our students are learning. And I appreciate that effort on the part of the staff and my trustees as we're researching the information that's being provided to the best of our ability. Thank you. Yes, Ms. Walton.
Thank you, President Mays. I, I just wanted to kind of, I'm, I'm feeling more positive than I was at the beginning of this meeting. I don't know why, but I think it's because our district is planning. Dr. Words and his task force and every doctor, Dr. Cavassos, Ms. Powell, you know, everybody's making a plan. And that's encouraging, you know, we're embracing the new realities and the changes that may happen and we may have to change those plans, but we're going to be planning for our kids to be successful. And, you know, that, that makes me feel a lot better about things than I did earlier. We've got some really terrific people on the team that's doing the planning and I just can't thank all of you enough for all that you're doing. And if there's anything I can do to help, let me know.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. I think we all feel the same. And not only making planning, but making planning that fits our Arlington ISD students. We're not just grabbing plans from other districts and other people, what they say. We're trying to make sure that they fit for our students here in Arlington ISD and that really is appreciated. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you once again, Dr. Wors and Ms. Powell. Next on our agenda, we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. Mrs. Benjamin, do we have any requesters registered to address the board regarding non-agenda items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, then we will move on to our agenda, our superintendent's report. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Mays. And just briefly again, to echo Ms. Walton's comments, I do want to thank staff for their work, the task force and everyone working on this. You know, our commitment to making sure that everyone is safe, our students, our teachers, our staff and our community has to be in the forefront of decisions that we make. And that's the lens that we look through. And so there's a lot of work being, being done on the planning, on the implementation and things like that. And so again, just a, a thank you to, to the entire team. And thank you, parents and students and teachers for your patience. And, and we're going to require probably a lot more patience of all of us as, as the weeks go on. But thank you so much for, for the patience and, and the thoughtfulness, but your safety, students, teachers, staff, community is at the forefront. And, and that, that cannot change. And I know that's how the board sees it and that's how the whole team sees it. So that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cavassos. Next, do we have any school board members with reports? Okay, I'll continue on our agenda. Mrs. Secretary, do we have any items to consider?
No, ma'am. I do not believe we have any.
Okay. So it is 6:50 PM and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.